I will call this officially to order and we'll ask our clerk to call the role of the board to set the agenda.
President.
Here.
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 Present.
All members are present. Board members, you do have the agenda that's been prepared by the staff and it's been published on the website. Is there any modifications to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, but Commissioner, ask you, any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Okay, the approval of our minutes from our last meeting held here on August the 8th, 2024, the clerk has presented these minutes and put these into the packet. Is there any questions or concerns of the board of the minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hart, any further discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, the next item that we have is a public hearing on our FY 2025 general fund budget. And the, that should be FY 2025 enterprise fund, that's a type of enterprise fund, special remedy budget for the governing authority of Walker County. This was advertised in the Walker County Messenger as required on August 7th, which is also in your packet. The complete budgets can be found on our website at walkercountyg8.gov/government/budgets. You can see the FY 25 budget in detail in PDF format. You can print those out, or you can come by and view a copy at the commissioner's office. Is there any comments tonight on the budget? Anyone like to speak publicly regarding the budget? Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward to our next public hearing. We have a public hearing for Robert Carter's request on 10 variances for property located at 217 Claire Street, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map and parcel number 0-205-097, and also 119A. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in opposition to this, these variance requests on Robert Carter's property? Any opposition? Seeing no one, we'll move. Is anyone that wants to speak in favor of this, or if the applicant wants to speak, it's your desire. If you want to speak, you don't have to speak, but if you want to speak, you can. Anyone on this one? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Our next public hearing is on Timothy Moore's request, a variance for property located at 0 Olafett Road, Rock Springs, Georgia, 30739, tax map and parcel number 0-326-023B. Anyone here in opposition for that one? Okay, seeing no one in opposition, does anyone want to speak in favor, or if the applicant would like to speak? Hearing none, we'll move to the next one. The next one is J&amp;E, can't remember that part, Perode, or Preperode, or ever say that, butchering that, I know. LLC requests a zone from A1 Agriculture to C-N Commercial Neighborhood for property located at 0 South Highway 341, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707, tax map and parcel number 0-289-036. Any opposition on that one, on Highway 341? Hearing none, does the applicant or anyone wants to speak in favor of that? Hearing none, we'll move on, on our agenda. Next item we have is our public comments. You do get up to five minutes. We do ask you to come to the podium, speak your name for the record, your five minutes will start. We do request that you limit your comments to things that we can have a positive impact on, or something that we can address in the county, but your five minutes, you can come up and speak. Does anyone like to speak tonight? Yes, ma'am, please come up.
I'm Laura, and I've owned property in Rossville until recently, and I'm concerned about the appointment of the Rossville Mayor Hal Gray as police chief. And I'll provide you all with my questions, but I did want to ask them in this forum. How much will Hal Gray be compensated? As I understand it, Mr. Gray did not get paid for the police chief title in the past, but to confirm, did Hal Gray receive benefits at 1099 W-2 in 2022 or 2023? Over what period will his compensation cover? At the last meeting, the chair shrugged it off as we're working through the compensation details. Hal's great to work with. What organization besides Walker County would send some, hire someone for a role, send them to training, and doesn't have a clue as to what they'll be paid unless they already know? It's unprofessional and irresponsible. Why would we hire a full-time mayor? It didn't sound like he would be spending too much time in the role since he's essentially a placeholder, as Mr. Whitfield called it. This type of language is reckless. It is, is it necessary for us to have a county police department? I would urge you to examine the other Georgia County Police Departments. I did not find one that didn't have a working unit with officers and several departments. In other words, they weren't used as placeholders. Compare us to Gwinnett County, Glen County, DeKalb County, Clayton County, Floyd County, and Fulton County, just to name a few. They are truly working departments. Does his role include the supervision and assignment of one or more employees, or the performance of administrative and managerial duties as indicated by the Post Act? There is a resolution from 2022 adding Mr. Gray as the police chief. I understand he resigned in 2023. Is there a re, a resolution reinstating him in 2024? I didn't see one. Are you familiar with a memo or letter from the Rossville Mayor's Office asking council to appoint a new vice mayor on August the 6th, 2014, removing Mr. Gray? At that time, council did follow through with the Mayor Harris's request. If you're not familiar with these details, I would ask that you do your due diligence and speak with those involved, as it's relevant to someone in the police department position. If the county needs his services in the police chief role, will we, will either of Mr. Gray's positions interfere with the other? Who would he choose? The county or the city? Let's avoid this dilemma. Before any compensation is settled, let's consider, do we need a police, a county police department? And if so, I'd urge you to consider a different representative. And then I've got my questions here, if you'll get back with me. I would like to know if you have any comments. At the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak tonight? Yes, sir.
She kind of blew me out of water. Anyway, I'm going to stay with the same subject.
Please state your name, please.
Scott McNally. I was kind of disturbed the last meeting also with the comment that man is just a placeholder. Wow, that's pretty, pretty tough, but I'm going to go with the same thing. He was hired for codes employee in 331 of 22, just as an officer. And then all of a sudden, he got the appointment in 22, 1110 for the chief of police. What I'm reading is it's all the same position as far as the Walker County Police serves as the chief of codes. So when he resigned in 9/5, what did he resign from? A question y'all can answer later on, but you can only have one position. I did notice his insurance was carried all the way through till the end of October, which was kind of interesting. But I guess we didn't hear about it, the citizens, until 8/8, which was your last meeting. The chair mentioned that this whole body had discussed things, and I guess I'd like to know at what length, because if, if it's collaborated as far as compensation, at the end of the day, when did it stop? When did it start? And fill in the gap for us between when he resigned, say to today. We're talking, be about a year compensation. That could be a good, pretty good salary, and I guess he could just pretty much come in and tell y'all whatever he wants to say. Then I guess there's negotiations, who holds who accountable, or who says who's right or who's wrong. So I really would like to know the date that he was either, if he resigned in September of last year, or '23, who, all of a sudden, at some point in time realized, oh gosh, we've still got to have his, whatever his placeholding position is for our government, we've got to have that. Who, who found that out and when? And then who first approached Mr. Gray, say, Hal, we got to have you back. We need your services. And at that time, was it done on just a handshake, an email, a phone call? I mean, how did y'all get initiated? Me, as a citizen, I really do want to know. And because there's some, the compensation issues, one thing, but how it all went from resigning from a position, and all of a sudden, just out of the blue, everybody's told that, hey, we still got a police chief. So surely, if all y'all had talked about it, then one of y'all can give me an answer at the end of the day. Thank y'all.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Ned.
Some of my subject is similar. What I want to talk about is Rossville expenditures and the agreement. First, last meeting, the 8th of August, y'all approved a new roof on Schaffner Building. I'm not a Rossville person, so I may call it wrong. And it was an unanimous decision, approve it, for spending a little over $38,000 on our new roof. The 9th of August, the next day, somewhere before 1:30 in the afternoon, there were materials sitting on the roof of that building. Now, I've got personal experience, I've ordered lots of roofing, I've dealt with that. You don't get it done, if they, if y'all called, someone called them, first thing Friday morning, they were all, by, by before noon, it was probably already in the truck and headed that way. I don't know how that happens, and to make it worse, I do know how it happened, because there was a purchase order written the 31st of July, eight days previous to y'all's meeting. How in the devil does that happen? It wasn't approved. Anything over $25,000 is must be approved by y'all. You don't need to take my time, you can answer later.
Hold on, let me.
No, no, you're not taking my time, no, sir.
Hold on.
No, sir, no, you can answer, I'm going to give you an opportunity to answer later.
Let me, let me tell you one thing. Every time you hit that desk, the people watching at home.
Good, it gets their attention. They need, they need to. Now, my time is, you're taking about 17 minutes, seconds of my time. Now, second, now, it was issued before, it makes me, it appears that it would be, makes me wonder about y'all's credibility. And, and, and next, the, you're, you have been negotiating with a, apparently with an individual that is in violation of the Rossville City Charter rules. So, from my opinion, why is he credible? It doesn't, doesn't make good sense to condone that behavior, and it might be construed as negligence of due diligence on y'all's part, would be witnessed by what was mentioned. You paid $2,500 for Mr. Gray, Mayor Gray, to go to Savannah. Why? He's a private citizen. Apparently, he's resigned. He's not a member. He's not, there's no record of y'all doing that. Now, next, the other thing was, is due negligence? I had an individual friend that told me that they looked at the thermostat in the Rossville facility, the rec facility, it was set on 54 degrees. How in the devil did that happen? You know, and the thing is, I'm going to conclude and say, there's rumors of apparent shenanigans involving taxpayers' fund. Common sense dictates that any rumor start as perceptions by the, by the citizens, by your people that are paying your money. Now, those perceptions may well be true. I'd like to think they weren't, but those perceptions will remain as truth, because people don't know any better, that's their perception. Unless you clarify them, each one of you, clarified by being, by transparent truth. And my discretion, my, my solution is y'all need to do that to avoid any further murkiness in what is going on with Rossville and all the shenanigans that apparently are going on. Thank you.
Please state your name.
Jamie Halsey, I'll hit the desk before I speak. I didn't plan to speak, but Ned is totally correct, you know, perception may be, well, be the truth unless perception is clarified with the truth and transparency. And that's why a lot of us are here, have been speaking for a long time, because of transparency or the lack of. I will say, at the last city council meeting in Rossville, you know, it was also established and noticed that the state ethics law of a sitting elected official working for a county government violates state ethics laws. And I'd like y'all to confirm that Hal Gray said, he confirmed, everything's okay with the attorney general. If you're good with that, I'd like to know that answer. We'll follow through that with somebody else, but that's one reasoning he got. Another thing of perception, and I'd like to answer on this too, if y'all had any thoughts, discussions, or any future plans for Mountain Cove? Again, rumor perception may as well be the truth when, you know, things go around, and that's been asked before, it's been asked of some commissioners, it's been asked of some people at Macklemore and all over. So I'd like to know if there's been any discussions, any future thoughts of, I'm sorry, Mountain Cove farms in the Cove. So I'd like to have an answer on that, please. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, in the back, very back, yes, come on up in the blue.
I don't really know, but.
Please state your name.
Cynthia McCoy.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I'm a resident of the new gateway at Rossville. And I'm wondering who overlooked the codes in the building of these apartments? There are three floors, a lot of elderly people that have disabilities, there's no elevators, there were no soundproof boards put in between the floors. You hear everything that goes on in another apartment, and it's really noisy. And not only that, there was no moisture barriers. I hang the bags in my utility room, and it fills up in a couple of days when it draws the moisture out of the air. Your sugar comes, your spices comes. What can we do about going forward? When the paramedics come to get people that are in need of medical treatment, they have to walk them down sometimes, breathe the lights of stairs. Is that what do we do? Can we do anything at this point, since all of these codes, and, and there are many more, many more things that were wrong, that are wrong? I live there. I may not live there, but I live there. And the noise is ridiculous. You hear private things in apartments below and above. Police are called time and time again about noise levels and things of this sort. So I'm wondering if there's anything that can be done to correct these problems going forward, or just live there and do nothing? And that's it.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Cynthia.
Cindy Bradshaw, I live in the city of Rossville. I have a question. It's my understanding at a previous council meeting, Mr. Blakemore said he cannot vote on the issue because it involves the county and the city. Did the city attorney say this is correct? That he cannot vote if it involves the city and the county? Did he tell him specifically he cannot vote? Or was that his choice? I'm asking you.
And we'll answer it then.
What?
We'll answer it then, like we do everybody else.
So we don't interrupt your time?
Okay. Well, I'd like, you can interrupt my time, because I only have one more sentence, possibly.
David, did you advise me as best, I refused my cellphone, I thought.
Did you tell him he could not? Is my question.
As, for me, got a little science thing going. We discussed it, I recall that, and I think I advised you that, you know, that it's a potential conflict, and you made a decision to, I mean.
He said he could not. He was told by you he could not. And if he cannot, we have taxation on this council without representation. Do y'all want that? Does anyone want to be taxed and not have representation by their representative? I don't think so. So this is a huge problem, because we're a republic and we should have a vote. We're individuals, and the individual we elected should represent us. And if there's conflict in that, that's not right. That's how you tear our government down.
Thank you. Yes, come on up, sir.
Name's Gary Williams. Grants. I'm going to read from fundingforgood.org, that's where I found this. Benefit of matching grants, secure newer increased funding for priority programming in your organization. Reassure funders they are not the only invested donor. Build a committed group of donors, it'd be taxpayers, I guess. Increase donors' confidence in your organization. That's just highlights of it. Now, grants, as far as the downsides, how strict are the matching requirements? Every matching grant has its own unique requirements. Do you have viable path to meeting the match? Yeah, taxpayer dollars. Is a funding for a priority grant, is the funding for a priority program, excuse me, for a prior program? If the matching grant isn't for a priority program, you may be stuck putting a lot of energy into something that is not mission critical. This can happen even with a smaller matching grant for a very small project, basically. You may, you may also end up diverting donor dollars from things like general support or core programming into non-priority programs or projects. If you're not sure what your priority programs are or are not, then it's time for a strategic planning process. Now, I want to refer back, in, in the package, you got a grant that y'all going to be voting on, it's R-027-24. This is dealing with the grant for the, over at the Civic Center. It says, y'all can turn there if you want to. Whereas Walker County has been awarded 566,000 grant for the project from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund, and whereas the board agreed to provide the required 50% match on May 11th, 2023, as part of Resolution R-22-23. So we turned over another couple of pages in that, y'all, in the packet, under Department of Natural Resources. This is, the money is supposed to go for the existing playground, this is Phase 3, and construction of two pickleball courts. As I spoke before on the grant, as far as the walking track, you know, the, the matching of 30%, which was 60,000, total of 260, I believe, District 3, Commissioner asked, was that going to be all for it? And y'all still doing, trying to figure it out, if that's going to be enough money for this. There again, it's taxpayers' dollars. Yes, it's coming from the Fed government, but still, that's, is it really a need? Is it a critical, something critical? I believe District 2, you know, I asked about, there was a discussion about the number of people that would use that walking track. There was no data given on how many people actually use that track. But back on, on this one today, tonight, this $566,000 on that same page, like I said, it's a matching grant, but the grant's for 566,000, I believe it's incorrectly quoted down here on page one of the thing. Total project cost, 566,000, grant amount, 283,000. It doesn't make sense to me. So I got a problem with spending this money and running debt, debt, debt. We can also speak about the one going to be over there in Rossville. 1.2 million plus 500,000 set aside if, if it's needed for a splash pad, and I mean, and that, that particular property was what Rossville Middle School has been playing baseball on? Where are they going to play baseball this coming year? They don't have a baseball field to play on, I guess, well, they'll be playing somewhere else. That's all I got.
Anyone else? Okay, move on to our agenda. Next item we have is a resolution, R-26-24, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to adopt a millage rate for the unincorporated and incorporated areas of Walker County. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, whereas pursuant to the authority vested in the board, and it is appearing that the total property subject to levy for maintenance and operations after allowances for the exemptions deduction is 1 billion 803,000, excuse me, 1 billion 803,293,491 dollars for the unincorporated area of Walker County, and 678,000, 90,868 for the incorporated area. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, be duly elected, hereby to levy the tax and fix rate. So the gross millage rate was 9.337, with the unincorporated having the insurance rollback of 1.699, the sales tax rollback of 2.31 meals for a net millage rate of 5.328. And the unincorporated, the incorporated gross millage rate was 9.337, with the sales tax rollback of 2.31 meals for the net amount of 7.027. So adopt and approve the 22nd day of August, 2024. We have a motion from the board to approve this millage rate rollback.
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second, but Commissioner Blakemore, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the millage rate has been set. Okay, Resolution R-26-24. Okay, Resolution R 27 dash 24, Resolution of Walker County Board of Commissioners to accept the terms and condition of the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Program and the other lawful purposes. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas the board authorizes Walker County application for grant funding for the project to construct a playground expansion and two pickleball courts at the Walker Rocks Park behind the Walker County Civic Center in Rock Springs. And whereas the Walker County has awarded $566,000 grant for the project from the Georgia Department of Natural Resources and Land and Water Conservation Fund. Whereas the board agrees to provide the required 50% match on May the 11th, 2023, as part of Resolution R dash zero 22 dash 23. Whereas the funding remains an offer under Walker County accepts and executes the terms and conditions of the grant. Therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, does hereby authorize the chair to sign and execute the grant agreement and take the necessary steps to implement and perform the purpose of the recreational project. So resolved and adopted the 22nd day of August, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution and accept this grant?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. Okay, we have a resolution and a letter from Sheriff Wilson asking that Deputy Robert W., better known as Bill Bowman, to retire and to issue him for his honorable service his service weapon. Resolution R 28 dash 24, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County for retiring Walker County Deputy Robert W. Bowman to retain his service weapon. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas Resolution R dash zero 36 dash 20 of the governing authority states retired sworn enforcement officers upon recommendation of the county sheriff or other appropriate commander shall be entitled to retain their service weapon as part of their compensation. And whereas on August 28th, 2024, Deputy Robert W. Bill Bowman will retire from the Walker County Sheriff's Office with more than 10 years of honorable service to the citizens of Walker County. And whereas attached here too, Exhibit A is a copy of the letter from Sheriff Steve Wilson to Chairman Shannon K. Whitfield recommending that Deputy Bowman's service weapon be retained by him as part of his compensation. And therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that Deputy Robert W. Bowman's service weapon Glock Model G17, serial number BGYC dash 364 is declared surplus and shall be retained by Deputy Bowman as part of his compensation. So resolved and adopted the 22nd day of August, 2024. We have a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. Okay, we're gonna ask Mr. Persley if he'll make his way up on this one to speak. Resolution R 29 24, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners, Walker County, for the purpose of enacting a temporary moratorium on the acceptance and issuance of applications for new licenses for retail package sales for distilled spirits. Whereas the Board of Commissioners Board is the governing authority for Walker County, Georgia. And whereas the Georgia Constitution and general law of the state of Georgia grants the local governing authority of each county jurisdiction to control all county property and to further adopt such ordinances and regulations as necessary to protect the public health, public safety, general welfare of the citizens. Whereas the Planning Office has requested time for additional review of the county alcohol ordinance concerning the retail package sales of distilled spirits. And whereas the board needs time to review the prepared, appropriate document, amendment, excuse me, to the county alcohol ordinance to hold public hearings required by law and to adopt the amendments and other ordinances. Therefore, be it resolved, that the board hereby enact a temporary emergency moratorium as follows. Number one, this moratorium is enacted for temporary and emergency purpose only and shall be in effect immediately upon the adoption of the resolution and shall continue in existence for a total of 180 days from its adoption or until it is repealed, whichever event occurs first. Two, the moratorium applies to all applications for any license approval or issuance required for a new retail package sales of distilled spirit license. Neither the county nor any of its staff or department shall accept applications for a new retail package sales of distilled spirit license. Four, previously approved licenses shall not be prevented from renewals or operating, or operations by this moratorium. So over resolved and adopted the 22nd day of August, 2024. We're gonna ask Mr. Persley, our planning director, to speak on this item.
Yes, sir, thank you. So I did request moratorium on these stores. And we currently have several stores that have been approved for license and have not moved forward with construction yet. You know, we put 90 days to construct an existing location remodel to get up and operation or 365 days. So we're coming on that 365 days. September will make one year since this was passed. And so what we've learned over, over the years, over this past year, I think it's time to take a look at what we have, what we've learned. We've had a few challenges and give us an opportunity to clear up these licenses that are not moving forward and complying and start fresh and, and adopt a few things that will help the community out in the future.
Very good. Any questions of the board for Mr. Persley at this time?
No, sir.
All right, hearing none, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Thank you, Mr. Persley.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, John.
Okay, we have Resolution R 30 dash 24, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to declare property as surplus and removed from the county inventory. Whereas OCGA 369 dash 2 provides that the county governing authority shall have the control of all property belonging to the county and may order enter on its minutes direct the disposal of any real property which may lawfully be disposed of and made and execute good and sufficient title thereof on behalf of the county. And whereas Walker County Fire Rescue has requested, one, 2008 Dodge Sprinter 3500, VIN number, the last four numbers being 5256, be deemed surplus and further request that the property be removed from the county inventory. Therefore, be it resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the one, 2008 Dodge Sprinter 3500 VIN number, last four digits 5256, be hereby declared as unserviceable surplus, removed from the county inventory and donated to the Walker County schools. Resolved and adopted the 22nd day of August, 2024. There is a accompanying letter from the Walker Rock, excuse me, Walker Launch Project or Program at Northwestern Tech that they're working and could really use this ambulance. And this comes as a recommendation from our fire chief. Is there any questions, concerns on this? We have a motion to approve this resolution to surplus this item. Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved and this item will be surplus to the school system. Okay, we have a memorandum agreement between the Georgia Department of Community Affairs and Walker County. This memorandum agreement is for the $20,000 for the Walker County Historic Resources Survey for 2024. So this is the documentation to finalize being able to receive those grant funds and authorize our county department to, to manage this. So this is all the fine print of those documents to execute that. We have a motion to approve this memorandum to receive these grant funds for the purpose of the historic preservation.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this memorandum is approved and accepted. Okay, Rural Fire Defense Lease Agreement Memorandum of Understanding with the Georgia Forestry Commission. This has been reviewed by our county attorney for it. And this is an agreement for Rural Fire Defense Cooperative Lease Agreement Memorandum of Understanding between the Georgia Forestry Commission, Agency of State of Georgia and Walker County Fire Department. Is there any questions or concerns about this? I know the forestry has a representative here tonight and our chief's here. Is there any questions on this from our board members? Do we have a motion to approve this agreement with the forestry service?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. It's approved. Okay, we do have a grant here. It's a federal grant for our drug court. The federal grant is for $99,000, the matching funds that will be provided through the Superior Court System through their drug program. 33,000 total funds of $132,000. The grant period is from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2026. Again, the drug court does cover all four counties in Northwest Georgia. We are the fiscal agent for them. This does not require any of those matching funds to come from any of the four counties. They have their other funds to be able to match that. So they assured me that there is no request of funds from this body. This is just for us to continue to manage their grants and to accept this grant and to put this into our system. Any questions to this grant? Hearing none, all of, I'll say, need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. All signed, there's a lot of places there I need to sign. Okay, the next we have is our zoning action items. Robert Carter requests 10 variances for property located at 217 Clare Street, Rossville, Georgia, 30741, tax map impartial number zero dash 205 dash 97 dash, excuse me, and 119A. What's the board's pleasure on this first various request? This was submitted from the Planning Commission and their recommendation was that we approve this without any conditions.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board?
Motion.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this is approved. The next one we had is Timothy Moore request for a variance of property located at Zero Old Lefet Road, Rock Springs, Georgia, tax map impartial zero dash three two six dash zero two three B. It's come over from the Planning Commission. They've reviewed this. Their recommendation is this board approve this as presented. Do we have the motion to approve this?
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Hart.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it is approved. The next one we have is for a request for rezone from A1 Agricultural to C and Commercial Neighborhood for property located at Zero South Highway 341, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707. Tax map impartial number zero dash 289 dash 036. This did come through our Planning Commission. They recommend that we approve this as submitted.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Askew to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this one is also approved. At this time, we do have our statistical sheet here. I won't go over, but just maybe about three items here. You'll see there are roadside trash or litter crew picked up 11,620 pounds. They've done a great job. In last month, they did 12,820 pounds. Real proud of them being out in the heat and working on the side of the road and picking up a lot of trash. Also, our new home construction, 30 permits in July, 24 in June, that's 170 for the year. And our transit continues to be a very valuable asset to our community with 2,480 transit trips in the month of July. And so our team in transit continued to do a great job there. Commissioner, comment time. Go to Commissioner Blake Moore, District One.
Hey, John, do you care to come up and address some of those concerns on Gateway?
So I think some of the concerns were the noise traveling between the buildings, right? Between the two units? Is that right?
Yeah.
So, oh, okay, through the floors. So the floors are constructed out of wood. They are insulated as well. They're not, I wouldn't say, they weren't constructed with sound, you know, deadening material, but they are constructed up to current code cycle that we're on and the requirements that are required there. Now, due to the ADA stuff, as far as regarding elevators, the ADA accommodating units are on the first floor. There's no ADA room, you know, apartments on the second or third floor, of course. And so all accommodations for handicap ADA accessible units are on the first floor. And that's in any unit, any apartment unit that's under a certain height are not required to have elevators. I'm not a first responder, so I can't answer to what the requirements are when you have to remove someone off the second or third floor. But I'd probably say that's not uncommon if, if something happens. Like I said, I can't speak to that. I'm not, not a first responder, of course. And imagine there's a protocol to get someone down the steps. But other than that, those apartments were constructed up to the current code cycle that we're on. Now, as far as the noise and the sound, I'd say in any apartment complex, unless it's, you know, a custom townhome, you're probably gonna have some noise traveling in between, in between those units, unfortunately. But they are insulated very well. Insulated up to what's required, you know? And unfortunately, when, when buildings are constructed, there's a current code cycle that you're on and they're required to build to that standard. And those places were built to that standard. Now, I think one of your questions was on moisture into the units. I know there was a call on the mechanical rooms. The mechanical rooms are in the hallways. And then in, in between each building, there's two doors and you have a unit, two doors, mechanical rooms that are fire rated for each dwelling. You will have moisture in there if the doors are open and whatnot, just depending on the climate change, because they're not conditioned hallways. They're exposed to the elements.
And when there's moisture, variance.
Yeah, so we contacted, that's, that's a privately owned business. It's private. And so we don't have the authority to go in there and, and clean up or, or do anything. So we have contacted Gateway before. I think you might've called me or, or someone else who was speaking on them about the mechanical rooms, because there is condensate pumps that pump the condensing, or the condensation from the HVAC systems out. And some of those were in the floor with the flow switch was not working properly a year or so after they were installed where their maintenance guys were in there doing something to it. We've addressed those issues in those dwellings. So I'd reach out to the owners of Gateway and get them to address those issues in the, in the mechanical rooms.
They won't answer their calls. They will not return my calls.
Got you. Well, I'll reach out to them as well and tell them there's been some community concern and see what we can do to help you out on that.
But I would like for someone to come and they may have to. But I would like for someone to come and they may have put the bare minimum, but still, the noise level is awful.
Yes, ma'am, understand. Well, we can reach out as far as the moisture concerned with their maintenance crew and hopefully they can do something for that and get you accommodated. Because when they're in there working or doing something, when they change or bump against something, the wire comes loose and the condensate pumps run off low voltage. So, sometimes they'll fill up and not pump out properly. And so, they'll drain it to the floor, there is a floor drain, but you will have moisture left behind. And so, that's what the issue was in the past. So, I can reach out to them, I can't guarantee anything. Walker County does not govern Gateway, but we can definitely reach out and try to help you out in any way possible.
Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, I guess you'll address the police chief stuff, been day to day, what you can. Appreciate everybody coming out, been involved, appreciate all of our hard work and hard workers and first responders.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Askew?
Yes, several questions posed tonight and some information, some new information's been given out to us. And so, I'm not going to, I'm not going to address, I will address Jamie Hulsey on the Mountain Coat Farm. To my knowledge, I mean, over the years, I've heard different people's opinions to, hey, then we need to sell it or another, that we don't need it. But to my knowledge, I don't know of anything cooking or any kind of thing, I can't address that. I will address too, Mr. Yates, the shenanigans. I'm not really sure what, I'm not sure exactly what that means. As I've kind of stated before, I think in open meeting here, there's a lot of the things and I'm not putting it off on anybody, but on the day-to-day activities of stuff, we don't see a lot of that. And I'm not trying to blame, I'm just telling it like it is, okay? So, some of the information, if we haven't seen it yet, then when it's brought to us, then we can digest it. So, each and every one of you that brought information forward, I will reach out to each and every one of you individually and once I've had time to digest what you've given me. Thank you for your participation.
Commissioner Hart?
Are you going to address the questions about the Rossville contracts, tell us some on the gym?
Yes, I can.
Okay, okay. And follow up to Mark, yes, shenanigans, I want, you know, there's a lot gets said, I understand. A lot gets said on social media, I understand. But I will say that myself, Mark and other commissioners, as well as the chairman and the incoming chairman, have been working to get a smooth transition. And Angie's been involved with some hires and Shannon's been very cooperative to work with those hires. So, we're working, everybody is a team, Mark and I talk a lot and others too, just to make sure that everything transitions smoothly. Because at the end of this term, you know, you're still a taxpayer and we're still a board commissioner, whether those other people sit up here or not. So, we are working to make that smooth. I agree with Mark, I haven't talked a lot about Mountain Coat Farms, I have heard a lot of different things, but nothing has been discussed amongst us recently about anything to do there. On a positive note, there's a lot of great work going on at the Ag Center, the roof has been repaired, the air conditioners are now off the roof, that building's been leaking, if you use that building a lot, it's been leaking for several years because of those units on the roof. That's been done, there's painting going on there, there's new windows in there, and that's all coming from the 2020 SPOSS, the $1.2 million that was allocated for that. So, if you ever use that center, go by there and look, I went by there Monday, it's great what's happening, looking forward to that. Also, the work here on the courthouse is still going, that's kind of slow and it kind of drags out. Last Sunday morning, I came to church, they were out there working at seven o'clock in the morning because they couldn't work during the week because of courts. So, that's going on, there's a few changes going on that we're talking about doing, a few change orders, but we're really satisfied with our contractor on that and looking forward to seeing that restored. Robert?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate all of our hardworking employees, appreciate the job y'all do, you do a wonderful job for the county and the citizens, so thank you. Mr. Hulsey, I also have no knowledge of any sale or discussion of sale or alteration of Mountain Coat Farm, hadn't heard of that, don't want to see that. Let's see, Scott and Laura, I'll also look over that and address your questions. Let's see, I want to wish everybody a great Labor Day, nice, safe Labor Day. And I'd like to wish Mark Askew a happy birthday.
That ain't shit, man, I gotta make it to tomorrow.
Number forty, right?
Thirty-five.
I'll take that one.
Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other comment I would like to make, guys. And this is, this is just in all seriousness, I can speak for myself and I do appreciate the back and forth and the information, you know, that just, that's good, just makes for good decisions when we discuss things. However, I do want to throw something out, that everybody's quick to come up and, you know, and have things that they want to discuss kind of in a negative fashion. I think you need to give your Board of Commissioners a little bit of a, what's the word I'm trying to say? Commend them on your mileage rate, so you know, we've reduced your mileage three years in a row and this year was a complete rollback. So, I mean, there's a lot of things we need to work on, but we're working on reducing your taxes every day, every year as well. I just want that to be said for this Board and the work that they do. That's all I have.
Mr. Yates, as far as purchase orders, the way our system works is when a purchase order is keyed in, anything that is a capital purchase over $25,000, we can generate that purchase order and print it out. But until this Board approves it, it's basically just a piece of paper. This Board has to approve those purchase orders for capital improvements over $25,000. And so, that's why that's, a lot of times, we may miss one or two along the way, but most every time, we have an action item that has a purchase order, that purchase order is put in the packet a week ahead of time. So, everybody can see that purchase order, but until this Board votes on it, that purchase order is not valid and official, even though it's setting in the system, because until the Board approves it and it's been signed, it's just, it's just a document in progress. It's not, it's not, no action's been taken. Now, in fairness, we had two quotes on that roof, it's been out public for a week, the contractor that was doing that job was looking and understood that he was low price, he was wanting to get that job done while the weather was good, while he had men available to do that job. And so, he knew Thursday night, just like everybody else, that the Board had approved that job and he had guys available to work Saturday and Sunday and he wanted to get on that. So, he had his materials delivered on Friday so he could get that job going. I know they're working this week, I was by there yesterday, putting the gutters on to try to get the project finished. We've not issued any funds on that project yet because it's not completed. They hope to have the gutters and have the complete job done over this weekend and they'll submit their invoice next week. But those purchase orders are going to be in our packets so people can see them and we've been very consistent about that as we approve purchase orders. As far as the thermostats, I'll have to double check this.
Truly justifiable, purchase order a week ahead, low price, but consider all the roof leaks and the dim on low price things.
So, all thermostats, and I'll double check this, but I believe those digital thermostats only go down to 66 degrees, which is still way too low.
64.
But if they do go that high. But one thing that we are working is to get fiber into that building like we're trying to get in all of our county buildings and that is underway, hopefully that'll be done. And once we get that in, where we can manage those, those are actually managed thermostats. And so, then we can lock those thermostats where people can't be there adjusting them. It'd be just like our civic center operation where the people that have the authority will have an app and they'll be able to adjust those thermostats accordingly remotely and be able to adjust those thermostats so that, that won't happen. So, that's a work in progress and that's forthcoming.
The question is, when is that going to take place? Because in the meantime, there's $10,000 utility a month is what I, if I'm not making it wrong, I figure.
Yeah, it's, I've been in.
When you address it now.
Yeah, I've been in communication.
You were waiting.
Yeah, with them this week already. As far as the Rossville gym contract, this Board did approve a contract, intergovernmental agreement, I should say, with that at probably, I guess, two meetings back. We sent that up to the city of Rossville, they tabled it last meeting with understanding some additional questions or concerns. I've not received anything back from them officially at this moment, so it's not on our agenda. So, I don't have any other update other than it was tabled and I know that's well documented.
We're a lot more on the data than you are.
Also, the, the other thing was our grants, I know Mr. Williams talked about grants. One thing with any grant that we go after, a lot of times it's federal funds, sometimes it's state funds, a lot of times it's federal funding that flows through the state. So, somebody in the state of Georgia is going to get that money, when that comes down from the federal government to the state of Georgia. So, if we're not actively pursuing those grants, one of the other 158 counties are going to get it. And so, anytime we can get a grant, even though we have to put matching funds up sometimes, that's money that doesn't have to come from other sources because it's coming through the federal government. You know, you can make a case or an argument that the federal government ought to cut out all grants until they get their financial house in order at the federal level, I get it. But we're in a situation, it's just like the broadband grant that we've got about three years ago. Those were federal money to put internet into people's homes, there was an allocation by the federal government to the state of Georgia. And if we didn't go after that money, we would have people in our rural communities now, they would still be trying to figure out what they're going to do about their internet. We didn't have to put up the matching funds on that at all. Windstream come in and put up the matching funds to that, it was several million dollars.
6.2.
6.2 million dollars that they put up the matching funds for us working that partnership with them. You know, there's been another grant that we've been chasing for, and we'll get this information our next meeting, it's been several years, it's probably been five years, and it was mitigation funds through the federal government due to prior year storm damages in Walker County. And so, we have applied for that, been chasing that for several years. And we actually even put in that application for generators. Because one of the things that I've seen in my tenure of time, that our county government and our county infrastructure, very few have generators on any of our buildings and infrastructure. We don't have generators. We get another Blizzard 93, really going to have a problem. So, that mitigation grant was for purchasing of generators. Got the email today that we have been approved for that grant and it's just shy of a quarter of a million dollars. So, we have in our 2020 SPOSS allocation, you don't remember the exact number, but it's $200,000 or $300,000, I believe, for generators. It's what it's allocated for, in hopes we would get this grant. So, now we can take our SPOSS money for generators, take this federal grant for generators and put those together. So, we need generators regardless, federal government just helped us with a quarter million dollars of generator money. So, that's why we have continued to chase these grants. My first four years in office, we really didn't chase the grants, got criticized for that. Now, we're chasing the grants and we're still getting criticized. So, I don't know, which just don't wait to go, but I know everybody doesn't always agree with it, but I know that if we don't do it, we're going to lose that money to another neighboring city or county.
I'm not responding since you called my name.
We're going to move forward, so, do we have any reason for executive session?
Shannon, do you want to address how, say, or no?
None at this time, we'll address that another time.
Okay.
No need for executive session?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blake Moore, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned, thank you.